Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Precinct 12 hasn't organized yet if they will meet over in the side hallway during the break and organize. I want to just speak about, just for a second, take your time if you may. As part of our new oath, we were going to pledge to be civil and respect other people's opinions and whatnot. Last Monday, oh, excuse me, last Wednesday, there were a few comments made that I kind of thought, and I've heard from many other people, went beyond the tenor of civility. And I apologize for the meeting to the ARB and the Building Department for some of the things that were said. The Building Department and the ARB were accused, rightly or wrongly, I think wrongly, that they would basically let any development that comes through the door in, that they were in the pockets of developers, that they were only trying to put articles forth that would legalize their own illegal apartments. I think these are all off the chart in how we should treat and speak to our appointed officials, our volunteers, and any other town employees or any public servants. And I would appreciate it, and I'm sure the meeting would appreciate it, if we kept that sort of tone out of the town meeting. We should be able to make our debates, make valid points without pointing to fingers or casting any aspersions to anybody in this room, either fellow members or anybody up at the front, especially our volunteer boards and our paid officials.[241.01][241.01](APPLAUSE). I hope everyone will take that to heart and we don't have to speak of this again. Thank you. Are there any town meeting members who have yet to be sworn in? If you'll rise. We have a new oath, as I just said, so you've got to raise your hand and repeat after me. I pledge to attend all scheduled town meetings, to participate fully and evaluate fairly all matters before the meeting, to vote in the best interests of the town, to support free and open speech, and treat others with mutual respect in spite of conflicting opinions. I pledge to conduct myself in a civil manner that is becoming of an elected town meeting member. I, now your name, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties incumbent upon me as a town meeting member in the town of Arlington in accordance with the bylaws, the Town Manager Act, and the general laws of the Commonwealth, so help me God. Congratulations. I recognize the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Greeley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and for your earlier comments, sir. It is moved that just in case all the business of this meeting as set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourn, it adjourns to Wednesday, May 2nd at 8:00 PM.
All in favor? Opposed? Yeah, we so moved. Announcement of resolutions. We have with us tonight the student delegation and some of the adults from Naga Okekiyo, our sister city, and we're going to have Carrie Dunn, the department head for the social services, social studies, the town of Arlington, is going to introduce us and have a few words. Please come forward, Ms. Dunn.
Mr. Moderator.
Sir.
I was going to actually start this with your kind permission.
Oh, Mr. Greeley, sorry.
Could I ask for an extension of 95 minutes again?
9.5 minutes, you got it.
Twenty-eight years ago, the Board of Selectmen entered into a sister-city agreement with Naga Okekiyo. Three years ago, Mayor Oda and a welcome delegation came here, and some of you were a part of that in the welcoming ceremony, and we planted a tree out here in the garden. I, that November, traveled to Naga Okekiyo, and you cannot imagine how that city opened their gates to welcome me on behalf of all of Arlington. It's a very, very special agreement that we have. Eight years ago, because of the efforts of the school committee, we started a student exchange program. And tonight, we want to welcome the students who have come from Naga Okekiyo, who will be here. They were on a tremendous whale watch yesterday, I understand, they saw humpbacks and all sorts of things. Tonight, they can see all sorts of fights if they want to hang around for town meeting. But this is a very special relationship, and when I was over there, the mayor and I also planted a tree in the city hall of Naga Okekiyo. We talked about how those roots will eventually join and intertwine, and that's the purpose of all of this. Please give a very warm welcome, if you would please, to our visiting students from Naga Okekiyo. Kanbanwa. Huh? Did you know I could speak such languages? Let me introduce now Carrie Dunn, who will head up our delegation of students as they head over to Naga Okekiyo. Please welcome Carrie Dunn.
Good evening, kanbanwa. Genki desuka? Okay, they're doing well. I am here tonight to welcome our visitors from Naga Okekiyo, Japan. My name is Carrie Dunn. I am the K-12 Social Studies Director for the town of Arlington. I was fortunate to work for a year as an English teacher in Fukushima Prefecture through the JET program in Japan for one year after I graduated from college, and I have wonderful memories of my time in Japan. When I came to work in Arlington, I was thrilled to find that a rich partnership with a Japanese community was in place. Working together with the teachers, parents, and community members of Arlington, we have made sure that our students here in Arlington learn about the culture and history of our friends in Japan. Our connected curriculum and frequent visits between Naga Okekiyo and Arlington make our students here in Arlington true citizens, not just of the United States but of the world. Next summer, I will be traveling to Naga Okekiyo with a group of 17 Arlington students. Thank you to our friends in Naga Okekiyo for your hospitality and hosting us. On behalf of the 2012 July delegation, we hope that you have enjoyed your time in Arlington and will visit us again. Thank you also to the residents of Arlington and our visitors here tonight for your friendship and your part in creating our close sister-city partnership, Dozo Yoroshiku Onigai Shamas. I will now introduce two leaders of the delegation visiting us, Mr. Motojima, who is the director of the Board of Education, and Ms. Sonohei Toyama, who is the coordinator of exchange programs. They would like to present a special gift for a special friend here in Arlington, Marie Karpelka.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tomoki Motojima. I am from your sister city, Naga Okekiyo. I am here with 21 students from our junior and senior high schools. We'd like to have a nice time with all of you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sonohei Toyama, coordinator of exchange program. Thank you for inviting us for such a nice town meeting. And on behalf of our delegation and sous chefra, so Marie, okay, it's difficult, Karpelka? Is that correct? Would you please come to the fore? We have a gift specially for you.
Thank you very much. Sir.
Town meeting member Dick Smith is principally responsible for this whole program. Thank you very much, Dick. You've done a wonderful job.
Any other announcements or resolutions? Seeing none? Reports of committees, Article 3. We have any reports of committees? Okay, Mr. Toasty, you want to take three off the table?
I move that Article 3 be taken from the table.
All in favor? Opposed? None? It's off the table. Mr. O'Connor?
James O'Connor, Precinct 19, co-chair of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. Our report is on your chairs. Please review it, and it'll be discussed further at the time the articles are presented. Thank you.
Just note that the recommended vote on Article 22 is in there also as part of our report. Report so received, Mr. Toasty. Any other reports of committees? None? Ms. Toasty.
I move that Article 3 be laid upon the table.
All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, we'll get right back to Article 8. Ms. Stamps was next on the list.
Susan Stamps, Precinct 3. I'm voting in favor of the accessory apartment bylaw. I think it's a really nice thing for the town to do for the citizens. We're talking about adding an apartment or having the option to put an apartment, a really small apartment, in a single-family home, not a condominium. Isn't that right, a single-family home? It can only be 700 square feet maximum, or a third of the size of the home, but maximum 700 square feet. That's really small. That's like 20 feet by 35. You're not going to get more than one at the most, one and a small child or a something like, or a small dog in that apartment. The trend today for older residents everywhere is to try to age in place, and the option of older citizens to be able to put one of these small apartments in their home so that they can have a caregiver living on the premises is really, it's just a huge service to the citizens, not to mention older parents who, for example, might have an adult disabled child who can then live with them, younger couples who have a nanny who can live with them. So I think that this is really an option that would be a wonderful gift for town meeting to give to the citizens, and I urge you to vote yes for it.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard? The traveling mics are having trouble interfacing with acme, so you'll have to come down front. One of them wasn't working, the other one's balky.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Leonard, Precinct 17. I'm having a little bit of a trouble on page 13 where it outlines Article 8 under the name of definition. And I guess my problem is, even though it states kitchen, bathroom, and two means of egress, I don't think it's really been spelt out why the word bedroom is not included in that definition. I wonder if we might possibly have some kind of clarification as to, you can go no higher than a one-bedroom, it'll be a studio, just some kind of nuts and bolts on why the word bedroom is omitted from the definition on the accessory apartment.
Mr. Fitzsimmons, can you answer this question?
Bruce Fitzsimmons, Arlington Redevelopment Board. In answer to your question, the thought of a board was that we were not trying to prescribe the room composition inside the accessory apartment. So it could be an open type of arrangement. It could have one-bedroom, it could be a studio. We thought that would, should be left up to the homeowner to decide.
Isn't that kind of like giving the homeowner kind of carte blanche on what they actually want to have?
Well, it's limited carte blanche, I would suggest, because we're still working with the size requirement that it can't exceed 700 square feet or one-third the size of the total structure. So I think if you factor in the size requirement, you're not going to have a property that has any more than one-bedroom. I suppose you could have two, but they would be small bedrooms.
Well, this is my point, that isn't it quite possible that if they get down on a piece of paper somewhere with the numbers that were given for how big the place actually will be, on a piece of paper that it is a two-bedroom, then that's it, cut and dried, and it'll always contain, be a two-bedroom? In other words, like if I turned around and I basically said, "As far as I'm concerned, I'm calling it a two-bedroom," it stays a two-bedroom no matter what?
I think that's up to the homeowner.
So, but I mean, nobody could actually turn around and come in later on and say, "No, you can't, you can't get away with this. This isn't really a two-bedroom."
Well, there may be some requirements as to the minimum size of the bedroom in order to qualify as a bedroom, and I can't tell you off the top of my head what the housing code would require in that respect, but if it were to meet the definition of what constitutes a bedroom and it still fits within 700 square feet, I grant you that you could conceivably get two bedrooms out of that.
Also, too, another thing that I have a problem with, and maybe it's reaching a little bit, but will the person in the accessory apartment be under any kind of a lease agreement?
It could be a lease, it could be a tenancy at will. We're not prescribing what the contractual arrangement needs to be between the property owner and the tenant.
So it's very possible that even though we're here to talk about relatives and in-laws and et cetera, how close they are with the family, it doesn't really matter. You could actually ask your tenant at will or a lease and be subject to all the rules and limitations that goes with such things.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was a woman in the back who had a turquoise sweater on last, yes. You're up. There you go, you got it on again, so I'd recognize you. Is that one turned on? Is the button right down the bottom, see the little button?
Janice Broadman, Precinct 15. I think that this warrant has good intentions and that it's looking at a problem, and I appreciate the fact that ARB is trying to address this problem, that I can certainly identify with, having grown children who want to stay with you, having an elderly parent who needs help, but I think unfortunately, it's going to have a lot more negative unintended consequences than positive benefits. I mean, consider, we have a single-family homeowner, and I don't own one, I don't have a, I have a two-family, but you have a single-family homeowner who says, goes and decides that they want to sell, and says to a realtor, "Well, how much can I get for this?" And they say, "Well, if you sell it like it is, you'll get $750,000, but you know, if you, before you leave, you put in an accessory apartment." Perfectly legal while you're living there, and then you sell it after that, you can get $950,000. Not too many people would be able to say no to that, and probably a lot of people would think it's perfectly fine. It's legal, it's what the town meeting approved. So I think that to address this problem, we have to think more creatively and that this particular, the way that this particular warrant is written is detrimental to the town. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rarick?
Brian Rarick, Precinct 8. Mr. Moderator, I move termination of debate on all matters under this article.
A motion to terminate debate on all matters under the article has been seconded. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
My opinion is a two-thirds vote. All right, we have, of course, the recommended vote of the redevelopment board. It's printed in the report. We also have two amendments. First, we have Mr. John Warden's amendment, which you all should have, the short one-pager, which is half a page, and then we have Ms. Patricia Warden's amendment, which takes up the full page. You all have those? You should, they were all handed out. So what we're going to do first is we're going to vote on John Warden's amendment, where he places certain limits on the active date, et cetera, and then after that, we'll vote on Ms. Patricia Warden's amendment, and then we're going to vote on the main article. Is that clear to everybody?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor of Mr. Warden's amendment, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
My opinion is defeated. We now have Mrs. Warden's. Oh, five people, one, two, three, four, five. Okay, standing vote on Mr. Warden's amendment. All in favor, please rise. Sam Tellers? Up front?
Two.
Two in favor up front. Mr. Schlickman on the left?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Mr. O'Connor in the right center, left center?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Mr. Tremblay?
Eighteen.
Eighteen in the right center. Mr. McCabe?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. All, eighteen, one-eighth. All opposed, please rise. Up front?
Ten.
Ten up front in the negative. Mr. Schlickman?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two on the left.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight in the left center. My right center, Mr. Tremblay?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Mr. McCabe, open the, excuse me? One-nine, nineteen. We've got seventy-three in the affirmative and 115 in the negative. It is defeated. We have Mrs. Warden's amendment. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
My opinion, that one's defeated, too. We now have, of course, the original article of the ARB with no amendments. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
My opinion, that's defeated also. Okay, that ends that article. That brings us to article number 11. Article 11, zoning bylaw amendment, comprehensive permit applications. We have the recommended vote of the ARB, thank you. Zoning bylaws amended by inserting words, certain oaths, et cetera, et cetera. Someone want to speak to it? Ah, Adam.
Christine Sapinski, Arlington Redevelopment Board. This article is very straightforward. Its purpose is to require electronically recorded testimony taken under oath for comprehensive permit application hearings that are conducted by the zoning board of appeals in the event that an appeal becomes necessary. Comprehensive permits are filed for affordable housing projects that qualify under MGL 40B. They allow a developer to exceed a community zoning requirements in order to construct a multifamily housing development with 25% of units priced to be affordable. In the event that the town may one day need to file an appeal to a comprehensive permit application, the Massachusetts Housing Appeals Committee, the body that rules on appeals, relies on ZBA testimony. With an electronic accounting taken under oath, the town will be able to provide evidence to appeal a comprehensive permit, and therefore, we feel it is prudent to require this additional level of protection to the town. No additional cost is involved for either developer or the ZBA.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wish to speak to this article? Mr. Hayner?
Bill Hayner, Precinct 2. Did I misunderstand that, saying that there would be no charge? Are we already paying for some sort of record that's been kept?
Chris Sapinski, ARB. There is no charge. We're not requiring a court-appointed recording or a stenographer, just some type of recording. It could be a video, it could be a tape recorder.
If I may, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, sir.
I'm Mr. Moderator, excuse me. Is it the intent to make the
Is it the intent to make, have this legally binding?
The intent is to have additional documentation of the hearing, because the committee that rules on these hearings needs that type of documentation.
And I guess, I'm going to repeat myself, is, do these rules, are they seeking to make a legal copy that may be used at some further time?
Is it a legal copy?
I think the question is, will this be a legally binding transcript under oath? Juliana?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was so mesmerized by the speaker.
I have that effect sometimes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Juliana Rice, Town Council. Generally, what happens in this situation is you have a tape recording, either video or audio, and then you can have it transcribed by a certified shorthand reporter, and once the reporter certifies that it's an accurate transcript, that can be used for all legal purposes.
Thank you, I understand that. But now it goes back to the original part. The maker of the motion said that there'd be no cost. Now we're potentially at a point where we might have to incur some cost by having the legal transcript made. Am I correct?
Yes, if an appeal were to be brought forward, then the appellant would have the responsibility of creating that transcript, and there would be an associated cost.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the article? Mr. Judd?
I think it's pretty simple. What we want is an accurate record of what is said and promised, and it does say under oath. I hate to, I don't really intend to insult anybody, but over the years, I have seen that the members of the redevelopment board, et cetera, even though they're pretty sharp, are often defeated by some, shall we say, industrious lawyer who finds a little loophole around the zoning bylaw. And I think this will help at least try to hold them to what they say. So I think that we should definitely approve this. And, you know, you just have to be careful. I've been around Arlington all my life, including coming from Sims Hospital, and I think you only have to look just up the street a little bit, to the corner of Mill Street and Massachusetts Avenue, to see what a developer can do with what somebody thought was a pretty good zoning bylaw. Or even go up to the corner of Mill Street and Summer Street, or look at what's going up where Buttrick's and, shall we say, Brigham's used to be. Now, if you don't like any of that, these were all done legally because they found a way to be legal. So I think we have to be very careful with anything that we're doing to make sure it is refined and that a lot of people have some time to think about it and think of the possible negative consequences unintended that might occur. As I say, I'm sure that the developers, when they get in, they want to make maximum possible profit. So sometimes that's at the expense of the way this town has been over the years and wants to be for many more. So I would advise that you vote yes on this article, and let's see if we can at least hold some of these developers to their promises.
Thank you. Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, precinct nine. Motion to terminate debate under all items under this article.
Motion to terminate debate. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Well, that was the last speaker anyways. So we have before us the recommended vote of the ARB. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. My opinion, it's a unanimous vote. Adam Clerk, you certify 85 members of the president voting in a positive? That brings us to article 12. Vote by law amendment, Human Resources Department. We have before us a recommended vote of the Town Government Reorganization Committee.
Mr. Moderator, sir, with your permission, I just wanted to make a point of clarification in the selectmen's report. What we often do is hold hearings at three, four, even five meetings, and then at one meeting, all of the final votes are brought before us, so we might at one point be voting on 12 or so. So often, you see Greeley absent or other members of the board absent, but no, we were probably there during the hearings or whatever. But on this one, certainly Mr. Tosti should take the lead. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tosti?
This is one of the two articles recommended by the Town Government Reorganization Committee, and before you is the vote, approving vote of the Board of Selectmen. This article really is pretty straightforward. I see it really more of a technical correction. Last year, the Town Government Reorganization Committee recommended changes to the Town Manager Act, and this body overwhelmingly approved those changes. They went to the legislature, the legislature approved the changes, signed by the governor, and that's done. All this does is bring the town bylaws into conformity with the Town Manager Act. Now, when we were doing that, there were two other changes that we made just because we were making changes to this section. It's interesting sometimes when you read bylaws, you know, they haven't been looked at for a few years, and you just find small things. So there were two changes besides the word, changing the word from personnel to human resource, and that is, we found in one place, it referred to the town accountant. We have a town comptroller, I mean, it's just words, but we might as well make things consistent. And in one section at the end, we found a reference to an act that was passed back in 1980, 31 years ago, that is really obsolete and no longer relevant. So we deleted that. So that's all this does. It changes in the town bylaws, personnel to human resource throughout the provision, and then eliminates or changes those other two provisions. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer it, but that's all this does. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak to this? Any questions, comments? Okay, Mr. Judd? Let's keep it within the scope though, sir. And then Mr. Hayner?
Lyman Judd, precinct nine. The vote was three to zero. Mr. Greeley and Ms. LaCourt were absent. I would like to know if they agree with the recommendation of the rest of the Board of Selectmen.
With my whole heart and soul, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. I assume that goes for you too, Ms. LaCourt?
Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Hayner?
Pass.
Anyone else wish to speak to the article? Seeing none, we have before us a recommended vote of the Town Government Reorganization Committee and the Board of Selectmen. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No.
I declare it a unanimous vote. Madam, we don't need a two-thirds. Positive, that brings us to article 13. Bylaw amendment, budget submissions. We have before us a recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is the, we don't technically have a program budget, and it also calls for a town's annual performance budget, which we also don't have, so all we're asking is just delete that. And again, I wholeheartedly agree with the Board of Selectmen, three and oh vote.
Same with you, Ms. LaCourt? Same with Ms. LaCourt? Good thing she's a town meeting member. Anyone wish to discuss this or just eliminating superfluous language? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. My opinion, it's a unanimous vote. We have before us article 14. Bylaw amendment, municipal charge, lien, school fees. Oh, you want to speak first? You want Al to speak first?
He can speak first.
Okay, Mr. Tosti?
Actually, I'm not speaking to this article. Mr. Moderator?
Sir?
Having completed the work that the town meeting has assigned us to the best of our ability, I want to ask for the town meeting to dissolve our committee. Should I do that now or when the report of committees comes up next?
Let's do it now. I like to dissolve committees. All in favor of dissolving the Town Government Reorganization Committee? Please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No.
And I think, and let's all give that committee a very hearty thanks for their work over the past three years.
Motion to table article 14.
We have a motion to table article 14. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No.
My opinion, it is tabled. That would be, just throwing it on the table, we're not postponing. Article 15 is before us. Recommended vote of no action. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Positive vote for no action. Article 16 is before us. Recommended vote, town bylaw amendment, time meetings, town meeting, oh, they want to change the time of town meeting. We have before us a recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom. Well, the Board of Selectmen, because it's not a money article. Mr. Greeley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Traditionally, the Board of Selectmen called for the warrant call for town meeting at the time of town meeting. However, a few years back, we put it into a bylaw because we felt it was only fair for you to decide the timing of town meeting. What this recommendation is, is instead of waiting to start until 8:00 PM, that town meetings start at 7:00 PM and conclude at 10:00 PM. Lots of hands are up. I know lots of people are coming from all sorts of different parts of the world to get here to town meeting. But in my opinion, it's, I think if a lot of us would notice, this is my opinion, one selectman speaking, this is not the position of the board, although the board supported 5-0 on behalf of this. Personally, I think after the break at around 9:30, if you'll look around, I think you will see about half of what are here before that break at 9:30. And I just personally, myself, would rather get home closer to 10 o'clock. I won't get to sleep any earlier. I lie there and think, why did you say that stupid on that warrant article, or why didn't you say that on that other warrant article? But personally, and the board supports, and we'd like to hear your opinion, we'd like to see town meetings start at 7:00 and conclude at 10:00 each evening.
Mr. Tosti?
The Finance Committee recommends no action on this article. It's a little bit of a selfish thing on our part, but the Finance Committee meets at 7:30 up in the selectmen's hearing room before every town meeting. And we do that in case last-minute things come up. And for some reason, last-minute things come up all the time. And this gives us an opportunity, if somebody poses another argument or something that we need to consider. For example, we did tonight vote to look at another article. We kept our position, but we voted at the request to look at an article. So we meet at 7:30. A lot of people can barely get here, especially at people who work in Boston. If we had to move this back to seven or even 6:30, there is just no way I'm going to get a quorum. And I think that will be, that'll just take that off the books, and I think will create problems, not only for the Finance Committee, but with town meeting on certain issues where we want to get something changed, which, like I said, happens quite a bit. So we recommend no action on this article. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Connor?
James O'Connor, precinct 19. Co-chair of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. We deliberated on this article, and like the FinCom, we also proposed no action. One of the reasons that we discussed was the difficulty of several members. Quite a few of us come from work in Boston. We appreciate being with our families and would like to have time to do that. That's one issue. I think the second issue is, as we all know, there's always a lot of paper on our chairs. A lot of this information is given to us and we're asked to deliberate on it. As much as the moderator has pleaded that article substitute motions are before us before 24 hours or 48 hours before the subject is discussed, it behooves us, since we serve the people of Arlington, to know what we're trying to deliberate upon. I think we need time to do that. In addition to that, there's quite a few meetings that go on amongst members. They discuss articles, points of view, positions, and we all help each other to learn more about the articles. If we start at 7:00, well, we might as well all meet at McDonald's and see if we can get through quickly so we can get our hamburger and then get here. But I think what's really important is to have the time to serve the people. So we, as I said before, at the Town Meeting Procedures Committee, wholeheartedly request a vote of no action. Thank you.
Mr. Marr?
John Marr, precinct 14. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have a proposed amendment to the recommended vote of the Selectmen. Simply would ask that, and I'll hand this to you, strike out the word of the time, 7 o'clock, and substitute therefore the time 7:30.
Second.
Okay. That's the simple kind of amendment that we'll take on the day of. Gee whiz, can't even need that.
To speak to the original idea of the Selectmen, I've had personal experience with, of course, being in the legal department for some time, and getting done at 11 o'clock, you're so keyed up, I'm talking not only in the legal department, but other members, folks that sit up here, the Selectmen, the Town Manager's Office, certainly the Selectmen's Office in particular, is grueling. And to get home at 11 o'clock, you're still keyed up, as Ms. Greeley referred to, and the next day, it really is very difficult to function effectively. This is a compromise, I'm almost always persuaded by what Mr. Tosti says, and I somewhat persuaded tonight, but this is a compromise. People will adjust. But I think it's the town meeting, this is your meeting, and getting here at 7:30, in my mind, is a compromise that would permit us to do our work more effectively. You would also have the option of adjourning, say, at 10:30 if you chose, but if you wanted to go later, you could do that as well, and perhaps have fewer town meeting sessions. So I strongly urge you to support the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen, but with the compromise of 7:30 on the start time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Laredi? Yeah, John Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Laredi, precinct 7. Mr. Moderator, I think everyone knows that politics is a matter of doing favors, and in that spirit, I'd like to, I mean, if you do a favor for the Board of Selectmen, they'll do a favor for you. And in that spirit, I'd like to do a favor for the Chair of the Board of Selectmen related to this article. Now, I watched the warrant article hearing on this article, and I heard Mr. Greeley say that he'd like to have town meeting meet at 7:00, and I heard him say he'd like to meet on Saturday, and I heard him say he'd like to put it to the vote of the town meeting. And I thought I'd show Mr. Greeley how to do that, and therefore I say, it is moved that if all of the business of the meeting as set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Saturday, May 5, 2012, at 7:00 PM. Mr. Moderator, I make this motion in jest, but I make it because the article before us does not change the town, the time of town meeting, except once a year. And the bylaw only establishes the time of the very first session of town meeting. It is the fourth Monday of every April at 8:00 now. In the future, it will be at 7:00. In the future, it will be at 7:00, should this article pass. The time of town meeting is set by that motion that I just read. We make that motion every time town meeting meets, as long as town meeting continues to meet. And passing this article doesn't change that. If people remember, it's just one or two years ago that indeed we voted on the time of town meeting, and we did it by using language that I just read to you, substituting 7:00 for 8:00. It didn't pass, and I suggest to you it shouldn't pass again this year. If anyone has put forward a warrant article before the selectmen that is a bylaw change, they're very fond of saying, we don't need to change the bylaws, we can just do it. Well, this is a case where we don't need to change the bylaw unless people are really determined that the very first session of town meeting each year needs to change to an earlier time. So I would ask that town meeting reject the, and vote no action on the selectmen's article. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to ask Ms. Rice to interpret our bylaw where it says, frankly, Chris, I think, it says the meeting will start at 8:00. I think that the meeting refers to all of our meetings, not just the initial meeting, but I'd ask Ms. Rice to opine on that point. Yeah, that's Section 1, Article 1, Title 1.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I certainly do not disagree with you, Mr. Moderator. And an additional point is, we may not want to be having this debate every single day when the Chair of the Board of Selectmen is making these motions. And finally, I'll just say, although you didn't call on me for this purpose, that I'm chagrined that the discussion we had earlier today about civility toward the elected and appointed officials is not being observed.
Wait, 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 wait.[715.12][715.12](APPLAUSE).
Point of personal privilege related to the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Loretty just stated the art of politics apparently is to do favors and to give favors. Give me one example, sir.
No, no, we're not going to get into a debate, sir.
Yes, we are, sir, if he's going to make the claim. Number two, sir. Number two, he claimed the Board of Selectmen have made the statement, if it's a bylaw, we don't need to abide by it, we can just change it. That's not true, sir. Give me an example, Mr. Loretty.
Mr. Greeley, please.
How can you let him say it without proving it?
Sir, we can get into debates about every single selectman meeting.
Don't say it again without evidence, sir.
You have anything else, Chris?
No, Mr. Moderator, but I will clarify. What I said is, when one brings a warrant article before the selectmen for a bylaw change, their standard response is, we don't need to change the bylaws. So I will say no more. Thank you. And as for the language of the, as for the language of the bylaw, I would simply suggest that people look, people should look at the back of their, of their orange booklet. The current, actually, the new language is there. And it's quite clear that what that is stating is that town meeting begins the fourth Monday of each April at 8:00. If it, actually, what it says is 7:00, because that's the changed language. And as I said, two years ago, the reason we had this vote two years ago is the selectmen wanted to change the time of town meeting to 7:00. It failed. It should fail again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Greeley's point is taken, though, sir. Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. Red Sox are ahead 8 to 1.[838.51][838.51](APPLAUSE). I would, I would say that I see that there are many who would find hardship at a 7:00 start to town meeting, because coming home from work, having a decent dinner and not going through the McDonald's drive-through, and getting here in time to be deliberative, can be a challenge for people who have jobs that extend to 5:00 or beyond. And I think that's, that's an important point and a reason why 7:00 might be a drastic, drastic change. I think that the amendment to go to 7:30 is a reasonable compromise. I don't see myself as supporting a vote to go to 7:00, but I'm certainly amenable to do 7:30. I also am opposed to Mr. Loretty's amendment to, or motion to come back on Saturday. I think we all have better things to do. Thank you.
I don't think that was a real amendment. He didn't hand me anything.
It was seconded.
I know, but no, I got nothing up front.[905.43][905.43](LAUGHTER). I don't get a piece of paper. It doesn't exist. Mr. Pelosi?
This is near indeed to my heart. Now, the reason why is not because you start at 7:00 or 8:00. And it kind of reminds me of being in church on Sunday. The church is mostly empty, and I hear a priest say, we got to make sure we all go to church. But the ones who are in church are there. It's the ones who aren't in church. Now, the way I see this amendment is very simple. Everybody takes an oath to go to all the meetings that they possibly could go to of town meeting. Okay? Very important. Now, unless I missed my accounting, and I don't think I have, one vote last week, we had 170 people in the room. 75 to 95. That means 80 people weren't here. Tonight I heard a vote, is that right?
Yeah, we got a total of 190 in that vote.
Okay. Tonight I heard a vote that added up to about 193, which wasn't too bad, but that still seems to me is about 55 people. Now, this is the legislature of this town, and you know what? I'm in favor of whatever time you have to start to get 252 people in the room. And you know what else? I don't care whether it's Saturday, Sunday, every day in the week, I go to bed 9:00. I'm an old man. I go to sleep very early. But the point of it is, if I can stay awake till 11:00, then people who have said they've taken an oath to do the best they can for some 45,000 residents in this town can stay awake till 1:00 in the morning if they have to. All I'm saying is, whatever you guys pick, 7:00, 7:30, the answer is a time that gets 250 people in a room. And not only that, if the concern is, as Mr. Greeley expressed, that about 9:30, we all get tired and go home to bed, I haven't gone home to bed yet, and I've been to, what, 12 meetings or so? Make sure they don't go home. We talked about it at the Town Government Reorganization Committee. We said, you can't just walk out. You can't say goodbye. How would you feel about that if you were talking to your representative? I don't know if we have any congressional representatives. You'd be pretty angry at them, wouldn't you? And we're supposed to be representatives. So again, you guys, this is the parishioners who are in the church. I'm trying to get these ideas across to the ones who aren't. Okay? So personally, I don't care what time you start. I personally think the way town meeting works and the amount of power you seem to have, you probably should meet more often than once a year. But whatever it is, whatever it isn't, my advice is, pick a date that'll get, and a time that'll get people in this room, and find a way to make sure they stay. Otherwise...[1151.08][1151.08](APPLAUSE).
I think the fire chief won't like it if I lock the doors.[1164.28][1164.28](LAUGHTER). Mr. McCrory?
One of the previous speakers said that some of the town meeting members would like to be home and have dinner and spend time with their family. Well, some of the town meeting members who volunteer at the time have dependents. Speaking for myself, purely myself, 8:00, I can barely make it for 8:00. I actually arrived early tonight to help hand out the town committee report, which is already done, so whoever did that, thank you. The town have the name and address of every member of this body. We do receive communications from the town. Why do we need a bylaw to change this? Why not take a survey, see what demand there is for this? Why waste time talking about this if it's already been defeated before? So I would suggest we don't vote this, but I would recommend whoever's responsible in town, send out a survey. Maybe it's a job for Vision 2020, to see if we want to change it, see what the demand is. Personally, it's difficult. I think the issue is not the starting time, I think it's the finishing time. Again, that should be part of the survey. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCrory. Mr. Oster? Mr. Tully?
Joe Tully, Precinct 14. Thank you to Mr. McCrory for ensuring that I didn't have to follow Mr. Peluso. I did, when I received the electronic copy of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee this afternoon, have the brainstorm to survey the body, and then it struck me in a moment of self-deprecation, I had a good chuckle at my own expense as I was driving down here tonight, because I realized the results of the survey are going to be probably exactly the same as the result of the vote when we finally take the vote. However, I did have the minor epiphany to also request any respondents to the survey if there were not town meeting members, to also indicate their preference as to the town meetings' beginning and ending time. And I also agree with Mr. McCrory that it's really the ending time, not so much the beginning time, although I won't, I won't split hairs on that. I took a quick look online tonight before I came down here, and I think the results are still completely unscientific and very minimal, so I don't know that they're necessarily going to be worthy of anything. I've only gotten a handful of responses, but it's interesting to note that of the few responses I got to, would you prefer to have, if you are not a town meeting member, would you prefer town meeting to start earlier, and would you prefer town meeting to end earlier? Both of those affirmative responses have a minor lead in the polls so far. So I think it's important to note that when, and by the way, I agree with almost everything that everybody has said up here, so that's a bit of an uncharacteristic position for me to take, but I think there's been a lot of, you know, this is not one of these issues where he's right and she's wrong. I think there's been a lot of merit to what everyone has said so far. But before I go off on that tangent, I did actually have a thought. Oh, I think it's important that when we, when we try to bring our little slice of democracy, when we try to promote it, that we try to be aware of the folks that are at home trying to watch town meeting. There's only 252 of us. There's probably an equal number, maybe a little bit more, of folks at home that have an interest in what we do here tonight. And although our opinion is the only one at the end of the day that's going to be of any consequence, I think their opinions are also worthy of consideration when we, when we cast our votes tonight. I would also say, and I certainly don't want to make all the folks up at the table here to my right parade up here and give their opinions on the matter, but I imagine that it's quite a long working day for these folks on town meeting nights. They're working a regular workday like most of us, 9 to 5, 8 to 5, 5:30, whatever it is, then they've got to sit around for another couple hours until 8:00 at night until the meeting starts. It might make it a little more palatable for those people if we are able to start the meeting earlier, not give them an opportunity to run into some of those issues that Mr. Greeley and Mr. Marr indicated tend to befall these folks when they go home at the end of the night. And finally, I would just suggest, as a matter of protocol, when we, when we take these votes, this is always sort of a thorn in my side when I sit back here and I tell people how they should be voting. If, if you don't want to move the meeting time, I think it probably still behooves you to vote for Mr. Marr's amended article in the event that you do lose the final up-and-down vote. And I would say for the same reason, I think it probably behooves those of us who do want to move the meeting time to vote for Mr. Marr's amendment for the same reason. In other words, if, if you're going to lose the ultimate vote up or down, it doesn't make much of a difference, but when the vote goes to the body, I think we all probably should have the least offensive version of the vote being voted on in the event that we, the final vote doesn't go our way. So I don't think that was presented in the most eloquent way, but if...[1532.42][1532.42](LAUGHTER). Mr. O'Connor at least understood it. All right, thank you.
Mr. Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct 8. I make a quick question, Mr. Moderator. Your remarks at the very outset of the meeting about civility towards the appointed and elected officials of the town, I hope you didn't mean that they are all of them exempt from all criticism, because...
No.
Oh, thank you. Because, I mean, one of the, one of the prerogatives of this form of government that we don't get elsewhere is that the members of this meeting have the right to call the people at the front of the room to account and to justify their actions and to justify their motions and to make them change them if they don't like them, for good or bad reasons. Now, in that light, Mr. Moderator, another question, and as the person has to reside at this meeting, of course, the essentials for a town meeting, there are three legal requirements. A moderator, a clerk, and a quorum. Everything else is surplusage. It's nice to have the selectmen here, but they're not a legal requirement. So, Mr. Moderator, let me ask you, would you find it convenient to get down here at 7:00, knowing that before you wrap the gavel and call us to attention to stand for the anthem, you have to, you know, look at all these amendments, and you have to talk to people who want to consult with you, et cetera, et cetera?
Speaking of my own self-service, no, I wouldn't. I personally work till at least 6:00, even on town meeting nights. I get down here at about 7:15, as it is. By the time I get my desk set up, there's always two or three meeting members who want to speak with me. It's five minutes to 8:00 before I know it. So if we were going to meet at 7:00, that means I'd have to get here at 6:15, 6:30, to start at 7:00. And that's, 45 minutes is just about what it, I find it takes me to start the meeting at 8:00.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I had a similar experience in my 19 years behind that podium, and I, I work in Boston, so I had a somewhat longer commute than you do. So, and particularly because I take the T, and so it's a really long commute. So, again, and as a member, a former moderator, a town meeting member of 43 years, and a member of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee, I urge you to defeat both the amendment and the original motion, and to stick with our traditional time of 8:00. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the question. Mr. Foskett?
Mr. Moderator, is there any reason why we can't adjourn the meeting at 10:00 any given night?
If you want to go 15 meetings, sure.
No, that wasn't, that wasn't my question.
No, sir, there is, we can adjourn at any point in time we want after 8:00.
So, given, if the, if the meeting, if the meeting would like to be efficient and have shorter, shorter, you know, stay within a certain number of meetings, we can adjourn at 10:00, meet the objectives of those people who would like to leave earlier, and hopefully be finished our town meeting in a reasonable period of time. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Carl? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 11. I move that we terminate debate on the previous question and all associated matters.
Second.
Okay, motion, excuse me, motion to terminate debate on all matters before us, which will include both the amendment and the regular article. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
Okay, debate is terminated, in my opinion. We have before us, first, Mr. Marr's amendment, which would simply replace the words "7:30" as opposed to "8:00" for our, no, wait a second, Mr. Marr, you want to say "7:00", yeah. Replace "7:30" with the word "7:00", so we would...
No!
Dyslexia gets me. John wants to make it "7:30" to start, not "7:00". All in favor of that, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
Ooh. Chairs in doubt? Standing vote. All in favor, please, of making us start at 7:30, please rise. Up front, eight up front. Mr. Schlickman, on my left. Twenty-eight. Mr. O'Connor?
Thirty.
Right center, Mr. Tremblay?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. And on the right, Mr. McCabe?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. All opposed to starting at 7:30, please rise. Mr. Mahan, four. Mr. Schlickman?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Mr. Mc, ten. I'm having button pushing errors. Pardon, pardon. The vote is in the affirmative, 121 to 69, so we have amended it by Mr. Marr's "7:30". We now have before us to recommend the vote of the Board of Selectmen, as amended by Mr. Marr. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
Ooh, that's defeated, I'm not in doubt. We have before us number 17, bylaw amendment, newspaper bins. Yes, Mr. McCabe?
Harry McCabe, Precinct 21. With all due respect to previous speaker, the former moderator, one of my former students, he made, he made a slight error, and I would like to correct it because it's very important to this meeting.
Sir?
There are three requirements in order to have a legal town meeting. One of them is to have a record. That's done by the town clerk. The other is to have rulings, and that's done by the moderator. The third requirement is that there be votes, and that's your job. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
That's why we need a quorum. Thank you. Article 17, newspaper bins. Town manager and selectman, who wants them? Mr. Greeley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is related to newspaper bins and requiring that a certificate of compliance be filled out and yearly, annually reviewed. But much better to speak on it is our Director of Public Works, Mr. Michael Radamacher.
Thank you, Michael Radamacher, Director of Public Works. The bylaw is intended to, a little bit of administrative cleanup, currently for newspaper bins, we do have a certificate of compliance, which allows us to direct the location of the newspaper bin, to make sure it's not in conflict with the sidewalk, or located too close to a entry to a residential apartment building, or a house, or whatnot. What it doesn't provide is a mechanism to keep tabs on these newspaper bins if they're still being used. Currently, the program, every so often, as we drive down the street, if something, if a newspaper bin looks neglected, or hasn't been used, we will try to make contact with the vendor, and it's often difficult to find them if they haven't been using it recently, and we have to make a judgment if it's pulled off the street or not. What we'd like to have is an annual renewal, where the vendor would come to the public works, be required to renew an application. We would have some type of sticker system, we could place a colored sticker on the newspaper bin to correspond to a given year. That would give us quickly, as we drive down the street, if it doesn't have the right colored sticker, we could just promptly remove it. And that's essentially what we're looking to, how to amend the bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Radamacher. Anybody wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. My opinion is positive vote in the affirmative, and unanimous. That's redundant, positive and affirmative. We have before us number, votes, historic district commission. Let's take our break, we'll deal with this when we get back. It's 9:25, let's get here at 9:35. Thank you, sir.
Precinct 9 will attempt to organize during the break up front.
Yeah, 9, where he just said, and 12 over on the side. Thank you.
Please come to order, come on and sit down. Please come to order, Ms. Fiore has the floor. Mrs. Fiore? Mrs. Fiore has a point of order.
I just want to recognize or let you know that I am prepared for my new job as measure of wooden bark. Walter Phillips from Precinct 21 was kind enough to make up a kit for me that has the wood and the bark and the measuring stick. So you all will know that I am ready. Thank you.
We're on Article 18, we have a force recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen and Historic District Commission article. Who wants to present? Oh, Mr. Dunn, first time presenting an article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, please be kind. Article 18 is about the Historic Districts, there was, the Historic District Commission requested this change. The police, excuse me, the police chief, I believe, is also delighted to be out of the businesses of organizing this. And it is, the purpose of this change is such the Historic District can conduct its investigations more easily and with less, essentially, less red tape. So if anyone, I think most questions would probably be directed to the Historic Commission if there are any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Leonard, Precinct 17. When I first saw the comments from the Board of Selectmen's report on this, I was struck by the sentence that reads Director of Police Services. And I remember, as maybe some of us in town meeting remember, a couple of years back, there was a situation that the Chief of Police had his title changed, which we later changed back to the Chief of Police, because it caused all kinds of problems, and I was afraid by reading this, Director of Police Services, here we go again, that we didn't learn our lesson the first time. After talking with the Chief of Police and after talking with Town Council's office, they have assured me that, right now, there is no Director of Police Services. Now, I will stand here and be corrected if necessary, but they were basically informed me that Director of Police Services is now the Chief of Police. Could we have a clarification, because later on down in the comment section of the same article, it talks of Chief of Police Services. And all I want to do is just clear up the idea, do we have all three of these positions, or all three of these positions are basically the Chief of Police?
Ms. Rice is going to enlighten us.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Juliana Rice, Town Council. I am similarly informed to the Speaker that there is no one currently in the position of Chief of Director of Police Services. And the reason for the bylaw amendment is to remove that reference in the bylaw, which is both antiquated and impractical.
So again, as I understand it, and just for the sake of town meeting, so nobody in town meeting will be confused, there is just a Chief of Police. And I think what I'm confused about is Mr. Dunn just recently mentioned something about that the Chief would be handling certain duties by the, maybe I may have misunderstood, by the Director of Police Services. I guess what I want to find out is, does the Chief know about this?
Mr. Dunn?
I apologize if I was unclear. The police chief is being taken out of this regulation. And I was trying to indicate that he was happy to not be in this anymore. That was my attempt. I was trying to say that he's getting, this change gets him out of that business and puts it in the hand of the Historic Commission.
That was my only point, Mr. Moderator, so that there would be no confusion that there is no Director of Police Services. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tully.
Joe Tully, Precinct 14. Does anyone have a copy of what this recommended vote would look like without their delete this, add this, delete this, add that? Is it? I'm looking at this, I apologize. If we receive something else that does have it, then I'll return to my seat.
Ms. Rice, do you know, do you have what it would look like after it's done? Basically what the new article?
Yeah, somebody could read it, just so we understand what the finished version would say. And just as a free, bit of free advice, when we're putting these reports together, if we could do that as a regular matter, of course, I think that would be helpful for those of us who don't carry copies of the bylaws. Okay, I'm told it's in the second to last page. Thank you.
You see it, Joe?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Rice. Mr. Dunn, did you wish to talk again?
No, thank you.
Oh, okay. Anybody else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, we have a force recommended vote to change basically up Director of Police Services with Commissioner. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It is a positive vote. Number 19, that closes Article 18, we've gone to number 19, bylaw amendment, vacation carryover. We have a force recommend a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Dan Dunn, Precinct 21, I think I forgot to say that the last time. I'm going to ask that the Superintendent of Schools Kathy Bodie speak to this. Town meeting previously has amended the vacation carryover policy. And we did that, we did that in a way that ended on the calendar year, which is very difficult for the schools who operate on a school calendar year. And so the purpose of this vote is to make it such that employees of the school department can have the same vacation carryover policy as the rest of the town, but without screwing up the calendars.
I would like to ask if our Human Resources Officer for the School District could speak to this article.
Yes.
This is Mr. Robert Spiegel.
Yep, being a town employee, he can speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, yeah. Robert Spiegel, Human Resources Officer, Arlington Public Schools. I think Mr. Dunn said this well, it's really just to, the schools operate on a different calendar, and this just amends the bylaw to not change anything on the town side, but allow the school calendar to work with this, with this bylaw.
Anything else, Mrs. Spiegel?
Spiegel.
Spiegel, anything else, Mrs. Spiegel?
No.
Be available for questions.
Yes.
Okay. You're still ready. Let's keep it civil. It's not funny.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Chris Loretty, Precinct 7. I have a couple of questions about this, this article and the explanation for it. At the present time, am I correct in thinking that employees in the school department accrue their vacation as of January 1st of the year?
That's not true. The accrual on the school side has been usually September 1st to correspond with the school year. Some employees accrue on July 1st.
I'm sorry, I phrased my question wrong. Could I try again? What I really want to ask about is, there's a section in the current bylaw that says, "Vacation leave will be granted to all eligible employees according to their accrual rates on January 1st of each year." And what I meant to ask is, does that also apply to school employees, or does it apply just to town employees? Right now, prior to the possible passage of this change?
Right now, no, and that's what this, what we're trying to change. To be clear, most of the employees on the school side don't have any vacation at all, because most of our employees are teachers and other instructional employees, and they have no vacation time. They just have, they work a set number of days per year. What, the people who have vacation time on the school side are full-year employees, administrators, some full-year administrative assistants, some IT employees, and a few others. But the vast majority of our employees have no vacation. So the people who do have vacation primarily accrue it either July 1st or September 1st.
Okay, I guess, I guess I'm confused about what the first change is, because it says, it says you're adding text, I think, to that sentence to state that for school employees, they will be granted vacation either on July 1st or September 1st of each year.
Yes.
But you're saying that the bylaw as written does not, I mean, that section of the bylaw, as I read it, applies to all town employees. So that's why I'm confused. When, and what it says is that they get the vacation as of January 1st.
That is what the bylaw said, but that isn't how it had been, how the school department historically has granted vacation for employees who are eligible for vacation.
Okay. All right, I'm not going to say anything about whether or not the town's following its bylaw. But I do have a question, though, related to when employees get their vacation, when it's granted to them. Am I correct in thinking, say, these employees earn 12 vacation days a year, that as of those dates, they earn, they receive the full 12 days of vacation on that date? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then if they happen to quit on the next day, they will take with them pay for all 12 of those vacation days? Is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
Because I understand when our former town manager left, that's the way he received it quite, you know, part of his send-off package was the fact that he was getting the whole year's worth of vacation for 2012, even though he only worked a couple of months in 2012.
Yeah, I can't speak to that.
Okay.
Keep it to the article, Chris.
I guess I support this. I think that we need to change the way that town employees, both in the school department and in the rest of the town, receive their vacation. And I guess, just my final question would be, would it make any difference to you, as your opinion on this article, if, say, next year, town meeting were to pass an article that required employees to earn their vacation over the course of the year, rather than receiving it all at once on the first day of their year?
Yes, it would. I think only because it makes it difficult than, you know, for, for example, if, because of the bylaw, there's a limitation on carryovers. So if an employee has used all their vacation the previous year, they begin the vacation year with no vacation days, and then they gradually accrue it. If they want to take a vacation, I mean, and we're talking about employees who have been with the school department for many years, if they want to take a vacation maybe in October or in December, they might not be able to, because they wouldn't have accrued enough days.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. First, as somebody who actually does accruals for another school system, a system where you'd be having multiple accruals over the course of a school year would prove to be quite cumbersome and difficult to track and monitor. Also, you don't want to have different employee groups accruing in different cycles, because that also makes the process of monitoring and tracking vacation accruals for those who have it more difficult. I have one question. Most of the people within, who accrue vacation with the school department do so as a result of language either in an individual employment contract or a collective bargaining agreement. Am I not correct?
I would say that you're correct, that most of them do, but not everybody.
So we do have a problem now in that we have existing collective bargaining agreements that conflict with this bylaw?
That's correct, but my understanding is the collective bargaining agreement, the terms of the collective bargaining agreement would prevail.
Yeah, so I think it certainly makes sense to amend the bylaw so it corresponds to the collective bargaining agreements with regard to the date where we are accruing vacations. This is a common sense fix to the bylaw. I urge the meeting to vote for it.
Thank you. Mr. Deist? We have a motion to terminate debate, and John, you have to actually name and address and all that stuff. I introduced you, so we're good this time. We have a motion to terminate debate. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. Okay, it is terminated. We have a force recommended vote, Board of Selectmen, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no. It's a positive vote, and unanimous. Okay, that brings us, that completes Article 19. We have now before us Article 20. Time limit for speakers in town meeting. Recommended vote, Board of Selectmen, Mr. Greeley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe the proponent should speak on this, so Mr. Wagner.
Yes, Mr. Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Greeley, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carl Wagner, Precinct 11. I have been in town meeting for just a few years, some of you also have. And I grew up in this town, though, so I have a longer history here. I proposed this motion because I felt that we don't want to stifle what we are saying, but it but it might be helpful sometimes to cut down on the amount of time we takes to say, take to say it. And with that, you can keep an eye on the clock as I speak to you. What my proposed article does is it simply changes the bylaws for our limits on our debate from ten minutes in the first time that we speak to seven minutes. It loses three minutes if you approve it. It doesn't make any other changes. It doesn't change the second time you can speak, as you may have, or may or may not know you have five minutes currently for that. It also doesn't change the initial presentation times, or times you can simply request via the moderator for, for more minutes if you need them, such as at the beginning of your article, or the beginning of your opposition to an article. Why you might want to support cutting the first time you speak down to seven minutes is, is I think just that we would be able to have more people give their opinions in less time. Crucially, the Selectmen, when I came to them, listened to what I said. I wanted five minutes. It sounds really cruel, doesn't it? And they said, no, seven minutes, and they support seven minutes, and I'm glad they changed it to that. The League of Women Voters, who are in this blue handout, has many useful things for you to see, also supports it on the basis of letting essentially more views in. The Procedures Committee unfortunately doesn't support it, and if I can paraphrase, almost quote, I think they say, "It would have potentially no effect and possibly stifle debate." I'd argue that it might have an effect of getting us out of here in fewer days, and it might stifle the time that we take to debate. So I hope that you'll consider voting yes for that. Finally, or almost finally, I wanted to tell you, Weston, three minutes. Lexington, three minutes. Concord, five minutes. Although Weston says they might go to five, because three is really too little. I, I did contact the, the Great Gatsby, Sandy Gatsby, the president of the Mass Moderators Association, and in Brookline, they also do five minutes or less, and they get out in three nights, which is kind of nice. In, in closing, I'd say, why not support this? I guess you'd get more knitting done, and you could surf the web on your iPods and things like that better, so, thank you very much.
Mr. O'Connor?
James O'Connor, Precinct nineteen. Co-chair of the Town Meeting Procedures Committee. As Mr. Wagner told you, the, the committee did hold a hearing on this matter. We discussed with him his points of view. I personally feel that since we instrumented the clock, we have a little timer here, the average amount of time that people have spoken is approximately three to five minutes. People are aware of when this changes to yellow, and it does kind of make the speaker a little bit nervous that they have to look at the time, but I really think it has made the meeting more efficient. I certainly think that we'd like to have everyone have the opportunity to speak to the articles when they come before us, but sometimes it does take a little more time to present a position, and if we were to do this, we'd have to do this unilaterally, which would mean that when a report is submitted, when a discussion is held by the initial speaker, we said we'd have to hold them to the same criteria. We do, however, have the provision where the mo, the body can, rather, the speaker can request additional time, and in most cases, the body, when it's taken by a vote, has agreed to that, except for Mr. Greeley, who asked for ninety-five minutes. We gave him ninety-four point five minutes, because we thought he'd include a little brevity. But I do think it's something to think about, that we, we discuss this and feel that the ten-minute limit has worked. If it doesn't work, I urge you to consider what your heart tells you, because we're all here to consider the people's business. So we really need to make sure that we hear what people have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berger?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Berger from Precinct six. I rise to speak against Article twenty. The technologies of today's mobile communication, whether they be Facebook, texting, Twitter, email, they have their places, but they're no substitute for face-to-face conversation. And these technologies foster connecting with one another in little snippets, and these snippets of communication don't work well, however, when we're trying to understand each other, and they certainly don't work well when we're trying to understand the complexity of a number of issues that come before us at Town Meeting. We need conversations at Town Meeting, full and complete. Sometimes those conversations will require ten minutes by various speakers. Not really very long for us to understand and express our beliefs and the reason supporting these beliefs, as they pertain to the articles being considered. After all, we bear a responsibility to vote on each article with as much understanding as possible. Now, Town Meeting, to me, symbolizes one of the last bastions in our technological world of mobile communication that respects the preeminence and importance of such conversations, and therein lies its potential for greatness, as far as I'm concerned. It doesn't serve us well, therefore, to vote to cut away thirty percent of the maximum time allotted to a speaker to converse with us for the first time on an article. However, Article twenty proposes such a thirty percent cut, by reducing from ten minutes to seven, the maximum time any of us can address Town Meeting for the first time. Now, last year was my first Town Meeting, and I'll tell you, I came away very impressed with the overall high quality of the content and the tone, especially the tone set by our town moderator for our conversations, because he insisted, as he has this year, that we respect each other's conversation, we listen to each other, and why? To try to understand each other. I can't recall a speaker who has conversed with us for ten minutes, who was not well-prepared, nor did I ever feel that a person's conversation was repetitious or inefficient, and kept saying the same thing over and over, especially someone that spoke for ten minutes. I haven't felt that way. While I sometimes disagreed with what somebody said, I appreciated being given the time to really understand what the person was talking about. I also have never felt that a speaker rolls solely for the purpose of filibustering, or delaying on taking action on an article, and that was the only reason why they rolled. However, even if that happened, we shouldn't reduce the speaking time from ten minutes to seven to minimize the time wasted by that rare occurrence. Our procedures should be based on what happens regularly and what promotes understanding. They should not be based on the worst assumptions about what solely motivates us. Similarly, we should not reduce the speaking time from ten minutes to seven, because we assume somebody might be repetitious. Most people, the vast majority, are not. At least, I haven't experienced in that way. Please, too, remember that when a speaker comes up here and asks a question of, for example, a town official, the response by the town official comes out of the ten minutes. And that's, that's important to note. So I say all the more reason, therefore, not to reduce from ten minutes to seven the maximum time any one of us can address it for the first time. We owe the ten-minute maximum to the people we represent, to ourselves, and to understanding the conversations on the important issues that are brought before us. I urge you to vote no on Article twenty. Thank you.
Ms. LaCourte, thank you, sir. Ms. LaCourte? Yes. Mr. Harris?
E.J. Harris, Precinct five. This is going to seem oddly self-congratulatory, but I promise you'll understand. In my time in college, I was a four-time competitor at the American Parliamentary Debate National Championships, a three-time competitor at the North American Championships, and appeared in, at, in top speaker and team lists at tournaments across the United States. In the context of doing that, I have defended some of the following things, and I regret most of them. That China should unilaterally de-peg the yuan, that Brutus should have let Caesar live, that utilities should never be a consideration in moral decisions, that Bud and Buzz and Woody should have told their Toy Story to the world, that the United States should adopt monarchy as its system of government, that the United Nations ought to be abolished, that Town Meeting should be implemented globally as a system of municipal organization, though I'm starting to be shaky about that one. And finally, nothing less, one time, when I was really feeling ambitious, the notion that God exists. I had to explain and defend each of these and hundreds more ideas in seven minutes at exactly the same pace I'm talking now. If moral and political philosophy, history, international relations, economics, theology, and popular culture can be meaningfully discussed in seven minutes, I think zoning laws can too, with a little bit of rhetorical discipline. I urge the meeting to affirm.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. The gentleman right there, yep. I don't know your name, sir, I'm sorry.
Nathan Swilling, Precinct four. I move to terminate debate on all matters.
We have a motion to terminate debate. Okay, all in favor of terminating the debate, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No!
Debate is terminated, in my opinion. We have a force, recommend a vote of the Board of Selectmen. As printed in their report, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed, say no.
No!
I believe it's a positive vote. Okay, five people have arisen. All in favor, please say, please rise. Same tellers, please. Ms. Mahan up front? Ten up front? Mr. Schlickman? Twenty-seven on my left, twenty-seven. Mr. O'Connor?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, my left center. Mr. Trembley?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, right center, and Mr. McCabe on the right.
Thirty.
Thirty. All opposed, please rise. Ms. Mahan? Two. Mr. Schlickman?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Eighteen. Mr. McCabe?
Eight.
Eight. The vote is one hundred and twenty-five in the positive, fifty-five in, fifty-nine in the negative. One twenty-five to fifty-nine, it is a positive vote. Vote, one twenty-five to fifty-nine. All right, that ends, terminates debate on Article twenty. We now have for us Article twenty-one. Amended by law, electronic voting, there's no action on this article.
Mr. Moderator, is it appropriate for us to discuss them together, or would you rather dispose of twenty-one and then have discussion on twenty-two?
Let's dispose of twenty-one, because it's a no-action article, and we'll talk about twenty-two. All in favor of no action on twenty-one, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? No action. That terminates debate on twenty-one. Article twenty-two is now before us. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Dunn, Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen has not taken a vote on specific language. The Town Meeting Procedures Committee printed some language, which is on your chairs tonight. That language is consistent with what the Board of Selectmen voted, but it is not, but we didn't actually take a vote on any specific language. I think it would be appropriate for the proponent of this article, Eric Helmoth, to explain the intent of, and purpose of his, of the motion.
Procedurally, we have to have that vote put before us. So, Mr. O'Connor is going to do that, I think, on behalf of the committee.
On your chairs, in the second page of the Town Meeting Procedures Report, the Town Meeting Procedures Committee does hereby submit the following motion. Voted that the town hereby establish a committee, not larger than seven members, to be appointed by the moderator, for the purposes of studying electronic voting and to report back to, and make recommendations to future Town Meetings. In the discussion before the Town Meeting Procedures Committee by Mr. Helmoth, we discussed several towns that have this procedure, accountability, and to Mr. Pelosi, I wish to tell you that your wish may be granted, were we to do this, because one of the ideas was that ten of eleven, we'd have a vote, and if there was electronic voting machines, each of you would have a little device, you'd press the button, and it'd be town-wide known that you, in fact, voted. So, I defer my time to Mr. Helmoth.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Helmoth. You're going to get your own time. Do a clicker. Sir?
Uh, we go to now seven minutes?
No, no, we have to change the bylaw, and that'll start next year. Secretary, no, the, Secretary of State or somebody has to approve it first. A.G. Attorney General.
Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Helmoth, Precinct twelve. The strength and beauty of representative Town Meeting is that it is representative democracy at a very local and humble, and many would say pure, level, and that's why I'm here. I think that's why most of us are here. Representative Town Meeting encourages dialogue between Town Meeting members and our neighbors about quality of life issues that matter in how we live our lives and how our children are brought up in this town. Right now, in Town Meeting, and in many Town Meetings, most Town Meetings, most of the votes, in some cases, all the votes, are essentially anonymous. We do a voice vote, whoever can yell the loudest. We do a standing vote that's more precise. But generally speaking, unless, in the very rare occurrence that we have a roll-call vote, our constituents don't necessarily know how we individually voted. I think there are probably a lot of reasons for the way things are now, and I think that that doesn't mean anything's broken, but one of them could just be that a roll-call takes fifteen or twenty minutes. Within the last few years, technology has emerged that would make it much more practical to have a publicly-recorded individual vote, and several towns in Massachusetts are, in fact, working to make that happen. I won't read the list to you, but you can see that the, the first two towns actually have initiated electronic voting in Town Meeting. Framingham is doing it right now. They're meeting at the same time as us. Brookline will expect to be doing it in the fall, having approved it by, by bylaw. These are representative Town Meetings. The town of Wayland is actually adopting this for open Town Meeting, with one thousand to twelve hundred people. And these towns have studied this issue extensively for a number of years, and I think that we can benefit that as we consider this. So what is the opportunity? Quite simply, I think that it's an opportunity to provide more to the voters, more accountability, more transparency about the decisions that we make. Voters care about the decisions we make here in Town Meeting, and one of the benefits of using a technology like this is that, at the end of Town Meeting, very promptly, a record of how each of us voted on key issues, or whatever votes we decide to make public, will be available for the town clerk in a PDF document to put up on the town website. That's exactly what happens in Chelmsford. That's what's happening in Framingham this, this term, and I think that's a good thing. I think that it has the opportunity to further engage voters with representatives, the people that, that are making decisions on their behalf. I think as a minor note, and that's really my, my intent in promoting this, this, this article, I think as a minor note, it has a potential to add some efficiency and precision to our process. We have an efficient voting process. A standing vote actually takes us about two and a half minutes on average. Yes, I counted. Yes, I went back and watched some tape. There's only so many standing votes you want to watch, but that's about the time. There are a few small advantages. The moderator would not have to use a calculator, because the two-thirds majority threshold would be instantly tabulated, and some things like that, that may shoot a few seconds and make things more smooth. So, that's the opportunity. I think it's also important to be aware of what it's not. As I said before, it's not fixing anything that's broken. Town Meeting is fine. This is an opportunity to enhance it, and evolve it, as it has evolved before in other ways, and improve it for the voters. Electronic voting is not automatically the same thing as a roll-call vote. I will say this, because the key is how you use it. If we wanted, we could adopt an electronic voting system and spend X amount of dollars, and have a very fancy way of doing the same thing we just did, which is a counted vote, in a standing vote. Now, that probably doesn't make sense, and I think it is fair to say that, apart from my intent, that this system would facilitate a recorded individual public vote, that if we were to purchase and operate such a system, the voters of this town would rightly expect us to use it for that purpose, and not simply to do the high-tech version of what we're already doing. But the distinction is important, because it's not really about technology. I think that this is an opportunity to have a mean- I think that this is an opportunity to have a meaningful discussion, and I hope we have it tonight, about the opportunity to change how we vote, and to change how we communicate how we vote to our constituents. So, a little bit about how it'd work, and I welcome your questions about this afterwards, if you choose to come up. But, the system that seems to be in predominant use now is built on the top, on top of an audience-response system that many of you have used in, in seminars. Uses a handheld remark, remote, there's a secure receiver, a computer database with town meeting members in it that connects and displays your vote, if you want, up, up front. It's very flexible. Um, there are a number of options about who operates that, and I can, if you want, I can go into details about, uh, what towns, different towns are choosing, different configurations of staffing and all that. So, I'll leave the details of that to your questions, but here's a picture of, of the remote that the Framingham voters, the town meeting members are using, um, this, uh, this term. This is just one option. I'm not here to, to sell specific technology, I'm here just to, to encourage you to consider and ask questions and debate about whether we want to study this, um, method of voting. But a handset like this, um, has the most, uh, security that you could, electronically speaking, that you could want. It sends your vote to the system, the system sends it back to the handset. It confirms whether you voted yes or no. And the handset, uh, transmits your vote securely to a receiver that then, um, can display a public vote. And this is where, again, configuration options, um, are all over the map. Some towns choose to immediately display a tally of who voted and how, right up in the room, just like this. Some towns have decided to wait until the voting is closed, the thirty-second window, whatever is closed, that, until you see this. Um, you can, we could do this however we wanted to, we could not show the votes in, in town meeting at all, and only show them afterwards. All that is up to us, but the, the technology is flexible enough to, to allow that to happen. And I think that that flexibility really demonstrates, um, what the issue really is about. And that is, it's about how we vote, it's not really about a specific technology to do it. So, a little bit about what it would cost. If we establish the study committee, as I hope that we do, we'll spend a year studying it and come back to town meeting next year with recommendations about whether we should do it, and what are we learning from other towns, et cetera, what bylaw changes we might wanna make if we did this. Uh, but in today's, uh, market, a system would cost, um, about twelve thousand dollars a year if we do what Framingham did, and rent the system, and rent a, a person from the vendor to come operate it. Or, it could cost around thirty thousand dollars if we wanted to buy our own system and run that ourselves. And again, I would, I would stress that that's part of what this committee will study, um, over the next, the course of the next year. And, as I mentioned before, we don't have to start from scratch. Framingham has studied this for six years. Brookline studied it for a couple of years, Chelmsford studied it for, for a long time, Wayland studied it for a really long time. And we, as a committee, if we, we have this committee, we'll look at these questions for Arlington, because we have unique needs, we have unique staffing, we have unique way of doing things. So, I'm not suggesting that we will just automatically follow the lead of another town. At the same time, they've looked into a lot of the questions that arise. Is this technology secure? What do we do about low-level incidental, dental fraud? Will this create backups at the line, in lines at the, at the front of town meeting? What if someone loses their remote? The other towns have grappled with all this and more, and many of them have found satisfactory answers to this. What this committee would do would be to really delve into that. And answer that for Arlington. So... Who doesn't love another committee? Well, we certainly do. I just counted, at least fifty-five boards, commissions, and committees on the town website. I've heard figures as high as seventy-five or eighty. Uh, and I must say to the moderator, we just lost one tonight, so there's room. But seriously, you know, it's very easy to vote for committee. I would encourage you to think carefully about this, and use the opportunity tonight to have a meaningful discussion with your other town meeting members about how we want to vote, how we want to perhaps improve accountability to voters. It doesn't make sense to have a hard-working committee, and this would be a very busy, hard-working committee, to do this, if there's not much enthusiasm. So, personally, I wanna know, is this something you think you might wanna do? Is this something you hate? Do you have questions and concerns? Uh, let's have a good discussion. And, um, if we go forward, the committee can have a sense for what you want its work to do, over the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, Mr. Howard. Got you, Susan.
Uh, Peter Howard, precinct ten.
That's a two-pointed personal privilege, please keep it down so she can hear. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Um, Howard.
It's off?
There's a button half, a quarter of the way up the, um...
Is that on now?
Deanne's gonna help you.
Oh, it's up there.
It is, in fact, on.
Oh. Try the next one, Peter.
How's this? Oh, good. I was recently at a, uh, a, uh, talk at MIT, in a, in a big meeting room, where the, uh, recording was done by, uh, professionals. We were all handed little devices, something like the one that, that Eric showed. And, uh, some of them worked, and the one I had didn't. The, the votes were not, uh, nearly as important as the ones we do here, they were just, uh, sort of exploratory. So, I hope the committee, if, if we vote for a committee, will consider that difficulty that we've had in, in keeping, uh, our traveling mics working in this hall, and, uh, consider whether other, what other towns have done to keep, make their electronics work. This may be an idea before its time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCory? Cue? Mr. Schlickman?
Paul Schlickman, precinct nine. I rise in support of this, uh, committee. It's a good thing to do, to study it. Uh, it often does not pay, and it's often risky to be the first in the pool, but to be a first follower, to come in on the second wave, is often a good thing that allows others to do a shakedown, and to give us valuable data that we can actually, uh, evaluate next year. But the one thing that I will state, we, we just voted to move our debate time from ten minutes to seven minutes. I don't think the amount of time we spend per speaker is necessarily what bogs us down. For me, the most frustrating thing is when we go through about thirty-five speakers, and then we take a vote, and it's unanimous. I would hope that, if we are studying this, we could find a way to sort of take the temperature of the meeting on some of these votes, so we don't end up going through thirty-five speakers en route to a unanimous vote, because we are convened to make decisions about the town, and as the former moderator always told us, we are not a debating society. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
Andy O'Brien, precinct sixteen. Uh, I, I rise up against this. Uh, I just see it as another small erosion of just going out and meeting people and being social. I think it takes away the senses of sound and sight. It takes away the ceremony, the pageantry, the tradition, the sense of community. Uh, there's no money needed to do what we do now. Um, you know, probably a small, just a small aside, that, uh, you know, think of the environmental impact, uh, you know, the plastic, the small electronics that go into these devices. Also, I understand that we wanna be accountable to our constituents, but many of us might come here to do our duty, but might be shy, and may not wanna confront an angry constituent. I think what we have now works pretty good, and I suggest that we stay with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Phelps? Okay, um, Judy Phelps, precinct X, move the question. We gotta go through the ceremony. Um, Ms. Phelps, motion to terminate debate, do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor of termination of debate, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Let's try that again. All in favor of terminating debate, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no.
No.
My opinion, debate is terminated. We have force a recommended vote of the Town Meeting Procedure Committee. It's printed in their report, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no.
No.
My opinion, it is a positive vote. Okay. That brings us to terminate debate on Article twenty-two. We have now before us Article twenty-three. Bylaw amendment, second water meter. Selectmen have a recommended vote of no action. And the FinCom also has a recommended vote of no action. Do you have a substitute motion? Does anyone have a substitute? No substitute motions, okay, all in favor of no action on twenty-three, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Ha ha, you lose. That ends, terminates debate on Article twenty-three. We have now before us Article twenty-four. Bylaw amendment, evening park use. Recommended vote of no action. Do you have a substitute, Ms. Weaver? But, there's... But there's no substitute motion. But if we don't have a substitute motion, there's nothing to speak to. He haven't, I saw he had an amendment to it, but there was no substitute motion to amend. Does anyone have a substitute, Article twenty-four? Seeing none, all in favor of no action, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? No action on twenty-four. We have now before us Article twenty-five. Leaf blower regulation. Recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen, no action. Ms. Wait. Well, it's, um, Ms. Band, please stand up, come to the front.
Uh, Carol Band, precinct eight. Um, I would like to move to postpone discussion on this article until Wednesday, May ninth. We do have a substitute motion.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone till Wednesday, May ninth. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no.
No.
In my opinion, it's not postponed, Ms...
Uh, the purpose to postpone is because there are people who would like to speak on this motion who are not here tonight, because we didn't anticipate that we'd be moving so quickly through all of these warrant articles.
We have, we have five people arisen, we're gonna take a standing vote on postponement. So, she's saying that she has people who wanna speak to it, and they're not here. All in favor of postponing, please rise. Same tellers. Ms. Mahan up front. One. Mr. Schlickman?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Forty.
Forty. Mr. Tremblay? Twenty-eight, he thinks. Do you need to recount your section? Yeah, you gotta stand up till he points at ya. Alright, that, that, that section recount, Mr. McCabe? Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Got it. Twenty-five. There we go. All opposed, please rise. Opposing, postponement, please rise. Ms. Mahan? Eleven. Mr. Mc, uh, Schlickman?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Ten. Fourteen. Sixteen. Hundred and one in favor, postponing, thirty-four against, it's postponed to May ninth. Be ready, Ms. Band. It is postponed. Article twenty-six is before us. Establish a committee, building maintenance, recommended vote of no action. All in favor of no action on twenty-six, please, uh, any substitutes, seeing none. All in favor of no action on twenty-six, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? It is no action. Article twenty-seven, transfer of real property, Gibbs Junior High School, recommended vote, the Board of Selectmen. Place it under the temporary care, blah, 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 with the town manager. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Dunn, Board of Selectmen. Article twenty-seven, uh, would put the control of Gibbs to continue with the town manager for another three years. The school committee has indicated that they still believe that this is surplus. This is essentially continuing, uh, the, uh, arrangement that exists today. Uh, there are no other changes that this motion would include, but it would extend the agreement for another three years.
Anyone wish to speak to this, Mr. Ready?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Chris Loretty, precinct seven. I, I think there's an error in the, um, in the Selectmen's vote on this. It talks about continuing the placement of the Gibbs School with the town manager. In fact, the last time Town Meeting voted on this, they placed the, um, management of the Gibbs School with the redevelopment board. And they did that because the redevelopment board in Arlington, uh, is both a planning board and a redevelopment authority, having certain powers of redevelopment authority delegated to it, uh, under Arlington's Town Manager Act. And, I think there's benefit to keeping that arrangement. And I know, you know, this question has come up in the past as to whether the redevelopment board can, um, maintain or manage buildings that are not part of urban renewal plans. And indeed, our former town council opined that it could. Um, when the question came up in regard to the, um, Crosby School and the Parmenter School, we received a different opinion from the current town council. I then checked with the Department of Housing and Community Development, because that is the department within the state that has, not authority, but, uh, has familiarity with, entity does have some authority, um, over redevelopment authorities within, within the Commonwealth. And I was assured by the person who deals with redevelopment authorities that, indeed, the redevelopment authorities within Massachusetts can manage properties even outside of urban renewal plans. There's two reasons why I think it is beneficial to maintain the management with redevelopment board, rather than with the town manager. Uh, the first is that redevelopment authorities were created to give towns, cities and towns, a certain amount of flexibility in the way they manage property that do, that doesn't exist under the normal procurement and, and rules that apply to town governments. So, that's the first reason. Second, though, is more practical, in that when the, uh, management of the buildings is under the redevelopment board, it's up to the redevelopment board to pick the tenants and, and set the rents. And I believe that's more appropriately, uh, more appropriately done with an appointed board that is free of political pressures. And I wanna give you a concrete example of that, as it relates in particular to the Crosby School. When those buildings were under, were under the jurisdiction of the ARB, and prior to them, uh, prior to the last time they were turned over, uh, to, to the Selectmen, or the town manager, I can't remember which, the redevelopment board realizes that the rents were signi, that were, the rent that was being charged was significantly, significantly below market, and very aggressively raised the rents. was being charged was significantly below market and very aggressively raised the rents. But for the past two years before the building, actually now before that building is sold, the management is under the town manager or the selectmen. The selectmen did not continue that aggressive rise in the rents. And as I estimated previously, the town lost in the tens of thousands of dollars because they did not continue the trend in the rental increases that they should have. So what I would like to do, Mr. Moderator, is move to postpone this article so that we can resolve this question. And I would like to invite the gentleman at the Department of Housing and Community Development, who is most familiar with redevelopment authorities in the state, either to provide information or perhaps actually come to town meeting, to tell us more about them. Over the years, particularly with the departure of Ms. McLennan, I believe the town doesn't fully appreciate the benefits it has with having a body with the powers of a redevelopment authority in it. And I think that we really need to be educated, we really need to learn more just about why the town has that authority, why, and why, how we can best use it. So I would like to move that this article be postponed to a time certain, one week from tonight.
Okay, we have a second on Mr. Loretty's postponement till one week from tonight, which is May 7th. That's the special.
Then can we make it the 9th, please?
Yeah, that'd be better. Okay, motion to postpone to May 9th, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
I believe it's affirmative. Okay, that one's postponed too. Mr. Loretty, I'd encourage you to speak to Ms. Rice and the manager, see if you can work your differences out in the meantime. We have before us Article 28, Street Name Standardization. Mr. Dunn, and in the back of your Selectmen's report are a whole treatise about street names.
Mr. Moderator, we have a bit of a difficulty. The town, the Board of Selectmen voted a different vote tonight. We put the R back in Albermarle, and we did not put that on everyone's chairs. We were planning on doing that on Wednesday. Would you like us to move to postpone, or would you like us to put the R on the fly?
We're going to put it in administratively, that's... so it would be A-L-B-E-R-M-A-R-L-E?
That is correct.
Okay, so on your recommended votes, third line down, the street name Albemarle is going to become Albermarle, and you're going to tell us why.
I'm telling you, the reason we want to do this is because we have embarked on a project to computerize everything into what we call the G.I. system, GIS system, geographic information. That is a database that is merging all sorts of information from all of our departments. So instead of having a single, like, map being kept by the DPW and another map being kept by Public Safety, it's all being merged into one map. And when we did that, and we started to do that, we found out that we had different spellings of street names in different departments. One department's Albemarle was another department's Albermarle. And computers get really frustrated when you try to use two names for the same thing. So the Selectmen, some of the streets came under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, and we standardized those streets by a vote earlier this year. Some votes, some of these streets come under the purview of town meeting, and so we are asking town meeting to standardize on one street name or the other. In most of these cases, the actual choice isn't that relevant, as in it isn't like there's one that's, you know, screams out that it's better than the other one. But it is important that we choose just one.
Could the people on Albermarle Street, like Albemarle or Albermarle?
That we changed to... the reason the Selectmen reversed course and put the R back in was because we were approached by the residents. Specifically, Amy Goldstein from Precinct 14 approached us last week and said, "What are you doing? You're going to make me change my bills, you're going to make me change my lease, you're going to... I mean, not my lease, my deed, you're going to make me change all these things. Are you people crazy?" And we said, "Well, yes, sometimes we are."
Anyone wish to speak to this article? Mr. Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct 8. Now, I appreciated, I guess I thank the town council for this year putting all this explanatory material in the back of the report and rooting out all those ancient deeds and street takings. And it's interesting that, not me to criticize the Board of Selectmen, of course, that the Selectmen would, in one year, call, spell a street one way and the next year they'd spell it another way. But I wanted to inquire whether anyone had put these questions to Richard Duffy, the unofficial town historian, who really knows the streets of Arlington and has written many articles on them.
Indeed, most of the appendix you wrote was provided by him.
Oh, good, okay. All right, well, that's my second question. And perhaps he answered this question, but the name Waverly is a British place name, and it popularized by Sir Walter Scott's Waverly novels, which are pretty good yarns, if you can wade through that Victorian English for many hours. And, but he spelled it with an E in it, so I wonder if Arlington should be E-less in that connection. Thank you.
Sir?
I've been corrected on my previous answer, and I apologize. Adam Karowski, who's the GIS coordinator for the town, did most of the work for the appendix. Richard Duffy did read it and approve it, and he gave us some comments, but most of the work was done by the GIS coordinator, so I apologize for answering incorrectly. As to your other question, unfortunately, I'm not equipped to answer it.
Sir? Yep. You decide to hand up? Yeah, you're up. Oh. Sometimes forget them. I know. I'm saying, oh my God, I'm getting... Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roland Chappert. That's it. Precinct 12.
Just a quick question. There are three streets here that are on quest... what we're talking about. So my question is, are there other streets with the same kind of issue? I live on Grand View, it's spelled two ways.
Grand View is one of the streets... I can't remember, are we doing it this one tonight, or is that the one the Selectmen did already? Grand View is done by a vote of Selectmen.
Do we have a list of all the ones that were changed?
There were three that were done by the Selectmen. I don't have them handy. Do we have those available?
Nope. There you go. The new guy has it.
And in fact, of course, it's actually in the report, and I just didn't remember it. So Appendix A has the different streets on it. And so Albemarle, Grand View is private.
I'm sorry, what, where are you looking?
If you go through the report, and you're partway through, after the votes at the end of special town meeting, which was page 23, the next page leaps back to page one. So you essentially think about page 24. Here, let me look for that.
So, Mr. Chappert. Albemarle Street, Grand View Road, Mount Vernon Street, Skyline Drive, and Waverly Street are all being fixed.
Where are you looking? Oh, okay, I got it here, Appendix A, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry about forgetting your name, Rowley. Anyone else wish to speak to the article, madam?
Amy Goldstein, Precinct 14. I just want to make sure people understand that what Mr. Dunn has proposed is putting the R back in Albermarle, which is what the residents of our street want. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir? I just have trouble saying Albermarle with my Boston accent. R, it's tough.
Ray Khan, Michael, Precinct 18. Could we give this problem to the spelling bee champions in our schools?
Thank you. Any other debate on this article? Seeing none, all in favor of the recommended vote, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous vote to change those street names. That brings, that terminates Article 28, brings us to Article 29. Recommended vote, Board of Selectmen. Ms. Rowe? You wish to speak before Mr. Dunn? Okay, Mr. Dunn, you've been upstaged.
I rise to ask to postpone this article to Wednesday. This warrant article was brought to us by Senator Donley, and the substitute motion has not been reviewed by him. If it's at all possible, could we postpone it until Wednesday? May 9th? Not May 9th. May 2nd.
Mr. Tosti, just...
Are motions of postponements debatable?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question. We... every time we do these postponements, that means we rush through the town meeting even faster and get to articles that are people who are not prepared to do, and then we get more postponements. And I think people should be prepared on day one to speak on all 73 articles. Now, I know this is going to come back and bite me, but I...
I agree with you.
But people should be prepared to do it.
I agree with you, Mr. Tosti, but as it turns out, when there is a substitute motion that we get, it would, it's common courtesy for our state senator who proposed this article and who has helped us in the last year bring a lot of very important legislation to give us financial stability, to have the respect to ask him just to review the substitute motion, which we did not have time to do.
So are you going to move to postpone all three articles?
No, just this one.
Mr. Fisher, did you want to debate the postponement? No. Anyone else want to debate postponement? All in favor of postponing to May 9th, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
May 2nd.
May 2nd? Oh, Wednesday. Oh, I thought you were like a week from Wednesday. All right, May 2nd. Start again. All in favor of postponing to May 2nd, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? It is postponed. That brings before us Article 30. Vote to increase annual limit for elderly residents to qualify for property tax deferrals. Recommended vote, Board of Selectmen. Nope? No one to say nothing, fine. You don't have to.
No comment.
Okay, we have the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Jamison wishes to debate it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. What does this do? I'm sorry, I haven't had time to thoroughly read this because we're moving along. Could someone just give it a song and dance so we could understand what's happening and why the board is in favor?
Currently, homeowners in Arlington who are at least 65 years old who live in their homes who do not exceed specified income levels may defer all or part of their property taxes by agreement to the town. I mean that quite literally. That is, I think the comment covers it. There are certain... this was brought up in particular because of the override that was passed last year. In some of the discussions in the override, discussions with seniors and with other members of the, citizens of the town about the impact of that, one of the things we talked about was the mitigating things that were available to seniors that, to, such that the impact of the two and a half increase, excuse me, two and a half override was not so large. This is part of that package of mitigation that we had talked about, and that we're seeking town meetings approval. Some, all, I believe, this particular deferment is already available, but it is not indexed and it is not linked to anything. This is trying to increase the size of it, or, excuse me, increase the scope of it.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, even though the comment relates to both 29 and 30, this increases the annual income limit from 40,000 to 52,000. Is that correct? Okay. And the interest part, which is the confusing part, which is the first two paragraph, or the second paragraph, we will be debating on Wednesday night.
Correct, the interest comes Wednesday.
Okay, so this is just the, if you earn 52 or less, you're eligible to not pay your property taxes and upon, let's say you're selling of your property or your demise, upon the sale of the property, the back taxes would be paid...
Correct.
With the interest rate that we'll set on next time.
Correct, yes, with an, there is an interest rate already in place.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. I'll be voting for this.
Ms. Rice, did you want to clarify something?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I would. Juliana Rice, Town Council. I just wanted to clarify the previous speaker's statement that if your income is $52,000 or less, you can qualify for this program. In fact, what this vote would do would be to tie that income limit to another part of the state law governing state income tax, circuit breaker for seniors. And that number is announced by the Commissioner of Revenue every year. The most recent number we had available was 52,000, but that number would change. So I just wanted to make sure that the town meeting understood that it wasn't a static 52,000, it would change every year.
Any other debate on this? Oh, wait a second. Ms. Fitzgerald?
My name is Anne Fitzgerald, Precinct 17, and the current Secretary of the Council on Aging. And I want to speak to this article because last October, at the seniors' center, under the auspices of the Assessors' Office, the Council on Aging, Clarissa Rowe from the Board of Selectmen, the entire second floor meeting room was filled with seniors who were asking for tax relief after the override. This is essential, that people pay attention, that those, there are 9,500 senior citizens in this town. Many are not well off, and to them, this tax increase is going to be a hardship. We're asking that you, the property, the current rate, the 40,000, of current assets be raised, and consider the $52,000. If you consider that a person's total wealth, $52,000, that is not a lot in these days. That we just urge you to please give this thought and consideration for our seniors, that many of whom are trying to stay at home and age in place. Economically, it makes more sense for people to remain at home and to be with loved ones or to be watched out for. The way the current climate is, in the healthcare reform, there should be more emphasis on community care and keeping our people at home. And it's much, much more cost efficient for the town to keep its seniors home so that the seniors' center, the Council on Aging, and the Arlington Seniors Association can help keep them there, along with Minuteman. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, madam. Mr. Loretty?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Loretty, Precinct 7. First, a correction, the current income limit is not $40,000, it is $30,000. And I've confirmed that with Mr. Spidey. If you've been in town meeting a few years, you might remember back in 2006, this had first come up. And what has happened over the years, originally, the state set an income limit of $20,000 with an interest rate of 8%. A lot of communities started doing home rule legislation to increase the cap on the income and also to decrease the interest rate. And then the state changed the income limit to $40,000, and that was a few years before 2006. And when the 2006 town meeting came around, I had put forward a warrant article that would reduce the interest rate and also increase the cap on the income. And originally, the Selectmen were supporting the $40,000 limit for income. The Finance Committee took a more conservative approach, and we ended up agreeing to $30,000 with the idea that it would be revisited in the future. To give you some statistics, and unfortunately, I didn't bring my papers from 2006, and I'm working off the top of my head, but I believe at the time, the $30,000 income would cover about 30% of the seniors in town, 65 or over. Once you went up to 40,000, it increased it quite a bit to closer to 60%. I did a calculation a few days ago using the same data, and this is 2,000, the year 2000 census data, and the figure of 52,000, 51, 845, whatever it is, well, actually, 50,000 brings it up to about 70%. So making this change would...
So making this change would cover quite a large fraction of the senior 65 and older. Part of the conservatism of the Finance Committee, I believe, was the fear that lots and lots of people would be using this exemption. In fact, that hasn't been the experience in other towns that have increased it to $40,000 or beyond. I think currently, there's only a couple dozen people who use it, and I think that's consistent with other communities, some of which have increased it quite significantly. So I would urge you to support the Selectmen's vote on this article, and we'll talk more about the interest rate later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trembley?
Hey, Trembley, Precinct 19. Mr. Moderator, I have a question, and I'm not sure this question maybe applies to Article 29 instead of Article 30, so you can tell me. It says on the last line of the comment section, of the first paragraph of the comment section, it says back taxes and interest are paid when the property is sold or transferred. And I'm wondering how that relates to putting properties in probate trusts and other kind of trusts.
Any transfer? Is that correct, Ms. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Juliana Rice, Town Council. The state statute that allows these local deferments provides that no sale or transfer of such real property may be consummated unless the back taxes and the interest are paid. So it doesn't specify beyond just a sale or a transfer.
So then, if somebody tried, if an older couple tried to, for instance, save their kids the trouble of going through probate, then they would be liable for all the back taxes, interest, and everything?
Correct.
Yes, on a transfer, yes. Mr. Varaglu?
Mr. Favaraglu, Precinct 10. I just wanted to get a sense, I'm actually all in favor of this, but especially after hearing Mr. Loretty say, there's only a few dozen or a couple dozen people that are taking advantage of it, which is slightly surprising. I'm curious why this wouldn't have come out of the Finance Committee or out of, or maybe to get somebody else's opinion on what is the expected amount or number of people that may take advantage of this, and can the town, basically, do we have the cash flow?
Mr. Gilligan, can you tell us how many people take advantage of it now?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stephen Gilligan, Town Treasurer. We have less than a dozen people who take advantage of deferrals today.
And what was the second part? Wait, Mr. Gilligan, was the second part your question?
Well, I think that answers it. Will the town be able to handle the cash flow change from this? It sounds like it would. Thank you. I'm all in favor of this.
Mr. O'Connor?
I just, James O'Connor, Precinct 19. I had a question. As a tax consultant, the issue that's on this about the circuit breaker credit, and there's actually three criteria. One is the value of your personal residence, the second is your income, and the third is the amount of your total assets. We heard from the Council on Aging about the question of $40,000 being the assets. The income that is being thought about is 52,000. There are three different criteria, so I just want to make sure that the clarification regarding the Selectmen's vote, it states on here about income amounts, not the gross asset value. But as a tax consultant, in the number of returns that I've done this year, most people aren't eligible for the senior circuit breaker credit. And the credit is based upon the excess, over 10% of your gross income that you pay in property taxes and half of your water bill. So I think in light of what Mr. Gilligan told us, we owe our seniors consideration here in allowing the deferral. As the Town Council's already mentioned, the provisions of the law state that the transfer does not mitigate or preempt the ability of the town to collect the funds that are due for the deferred property taxes. Thank you.
Let's vote. Can we vote first? There's only one person left. All right, so, motion to adjourn, it's been seconded. All in favor? Well, hey, we got one guy left to speak. It's not debatable. We have to vote. All in favor of adjournment? All opposed?
No!
Okay. Mr. Harris, he passes. Okay. We have before us a recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? No, affirmative vote. And? Second? We have any notices of reconsideration? Mr. Judd, what are you reconsidering? You are, Mr. Judd, so there's notice of reconsideration on Article 30? Okay. I believe we are adjourned. Thank you.